Ready to go where you are, Mr. President.
Thanks, Kerry. Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Ed Flynn, and I am the Council President. In accordance with Chapter 20 of Acts 2021, modifying certain requirements of the open meeting law, the Boston City Council will be conducting this meeting virtually. Viewers can watch the council meeting live on YouTube by visiting boston.gov backslash city council dash TV. Roll call. Mr. Clerk, will you please call the roll to ascertain the presence of a quorum, please?
Counselor Arroyo.
President.
Counselor Arroyo, present. Counselor Baker.
Yeah.
Counselor Baker, present. Counselor Bach. Counselor Braden.
Yes.
Counselor Braden, present. Counselor Edwards.
Present.
Counselor Edwards, present. Counselor Fernandez Anderson. Counselor Flaherty.
Yeah.
Counselor Flaherty, present. Counselor Flynn.
Yeah.
Counselor Flynn, present. Counselor Lara.
Present.
Counselor Lara, present. Counselor Louis Jen.
Present.
Counselor Louis Jen, present. Counselor Mejia.
Here.
Counselor Mejia, present. Counselor Murphy.
Yeah.
Counselor Murphy, present. And Counselor Worrell. Mr. President, we have a quorum.
I have been informed by the clerk that a quorum is present. At this time, I'm honored to have Monsignor Liam Bergen to give the opening prayer at today's Boston City Council meeting. Monsignor Liam Bergen has been a priest in residence at the Gate of Heaven in St. Bridget Parish since 2012. He has studied and taught in Italy for over 24 years at the Pontifical Irish College in Rome as well. In September 2014, he was named professor at Boston College and has been a visiting professor there now for over three years as well. Monsignor Bergen is a native of Ireland, and he is a great community member to our neighborhood here in South Boston. He's also the parish priest of both myself and Counselor Michael Flaherty, and we had Monsignor Liam here with us last year. We, in recognition of the 150th anniversary of the Great Irish Famine, we also pray for the world hunger issue that had a devastating impact, not only in Ireland 150 years ago, but throughout the world today. So, thank you, Monsignor Liam, for being with us and a great friend to so many across the city.
Thank you. Good afternoon, councilors. I greet you from my office at Boston College. And yes, I live at St. Bridget Gate of Heaven Parishes in South Boston, where, as you know, it's home to President Flynn and Counselor Flaherty. February begins with the Feast of Saint Bridget, who is venerated as the patroness of Ireland. Unlike Patrick, Bridget was actually born in Ireland in the middle of the 6th century. And as of next year, the Irish government has decreed that the first Monday of February will be a national holiday in honor of Bridget. There are not many holidays that honor women. Perhaps it's time to insert more on our calendars. Bridget was a daughter of a pagan father and a Christian mother. And legend records that she was born in a doorway on a threshold between two worlds, rooted in an old, secure pagan world and opening onto a new Christian world. In a sense, she was born between winter and spring. And that's why her feast day is celebrated on February 1st, which is considered the first day of spring in Ireland. I know you won't get away with that in Boston, but believe me, the daffodils are blooming in Dublin. May Bridget's example help us to appreciate the rich tradition we inherit while remaining open to the myriad possibilities that the future presents. And perhaps the greatest legend about Bridget tells how she tried to get land from the local king to build a church and a hospice for the poor. The king wasn't particularly generous and refused Bridget's request. "Go away, woman. Stop annoying me," he said. But because she was a woman, she would not take no for an answer and kept coming back with a request. Eventually, the king agreed to give the piece of land that Bridget could cover with her cloak. So Bridget laid down her cloak, and the women who were with her took a corner each and facing a different point of the compass, they began to run. And as they did, the cloth or the cloak miraculously expanded until it covered a huge area. "My cloak is about to cover your whole province with the compassion of God and God's generosity to the poor," Bridget said to the king. "I will give you a decent plot of ground to build your church and the hospice for the poor," the king replied. "And I will be more charitable in the future." In a time of difficulty and need, Bridget's action hurled at a different vision of reality, where generosity overcame miserliness, her compassion overcame indifference, and where all women and men were covered with the expansive cloak of the generosity of God. Lord God, send your blessing upon us, upon our city, upon this nation, and upon our fragile world. Bless this chamber and the work undertaken here. With Saint Bridget, help us to respect our past and our traditions and yet be open to the promise that the future holds. Let the cloak of your compassion enfold us so that all might know your gracious mercy. We make this prayer in God's name. Amen.
Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Monsignor Liam. Beautiful, beautiful prayer. We want to welcome you to stay on this meeting, but we also know that you're very busy. So we want to say thank you for opening the city council session with the prayer. And I just want to let my colleagues know, Monsignor Liam went down to see my mother and father over the weekend to present them holy communion because they weren't feeling well. So I want to say thank you also, Monsignor Liam, for your kindness and generosity, not just to my parents, but to so many seniors throughout the neighborhood as well.
Thank you, President.
Thank you. Now, let us stand, if you're able to, for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. The first order of business. Mr. Clerk, could you check to see what other city council colleagues have come on? I know Counselor Worrell is here.
Counselor Worrell and Counselor Fernandez Anderson. Have joined us.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Presentations, we don't have any. Order of business. First order of business is the approval of the minutes. Now on to the first order of business, which is the approval of the minutes. Seeing and hearing no discussion on this matter, the chair moves to approve the minutes from the last meeting as presented. Since this is a virtual meeting, we need to take a roll call vote. So, Mr. Clerk, can you please take a roll call vote for us?
Yes, Mr. President. Approval of the previous meeting minutes. Counselor Arroyo.
Yes.
Counselor Arroyo, yes. Counselor Baker.
Aye.
Counselor Baker, yes. Counselor Bach. Counselor Braden.
Yes.
Counselor Braden, yes. Counselor Edwards. Counselor Edwards. Counselor Fernandez Anderson.
Yes, good morning.
Good morning. Counselor Fernandez Anderson, yes. Counselor Flaherty.
Yes.
Counselor Flaherty, yes. Counselor Flynn.
Yes.
Counselor Flynn, yes. Counselor Lara.
Yes.
Counselor Lara, yes. Counselor Louis Jen.
Yes.
Counselor Louis Jen, yes. Counselor Mejia.
Yes.
Counselor Mejia, yes. Counselor Murphy.
Yes.
Counselor Murphy, yes. Counselor Worrell.
Yes.
Counselor Worrell, yes. Counselor Edwards.
Yes, my apologies.
Sorry, Counselor Edwards, yes. Mr. President, the minutes have been approved.
Mr. President, may I request to be added to the roll and have the opportunity to vote?
Counselor Bach.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. The minutes of the last meeting stand as approved. Communications from her honor the mayor, none. Reports of public officers and others. Mr. Clerk, please read docket 0258, please.
Docket number 0258. Communication was received from Maureen Joyce, city auditor regarding the City of Boston's fiscal 2021 annual comprehensive financial report.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Docket 0258 will be placed on file. We're on to matters recently heard for possible action. Mr. Clerk, please read 0158, please.
Docket number 0158. Message in order for your approval and order authorizing the issuance of refunding bonds in the principal amount not to exceed $200 million. The current conditions in the municipal bond market appears to be favorable for the city to potentially realize significant savings in debt service costs by refunding certain of its outstanding general obligation bonds.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. At this time, the chair recognizes Counselor Fernandez Anderson, the Chair of the Committee on Ways and Means. Counselor Fernandez Anderson, you have the floor.
Thank you, Counsel Flynn. In case it needs to be said, this is not my maiden speech. You should all have the committee report in your inbox. The Committee on Ways and Means held a public hearing on Monday, February 7, and heard testimony from City CEO Justin Starrett and Maureen Gerso and Richard DiPiano from Treasury. This order requests refunding authorization of $200 million, which will cover an upcoming anticipated refunding transaction and future potential transactions. Refunding transactions are transactions in which new bonds are issued at more favorable rates than previously issued bonds, similar to the refinancing of an individual's home mortgage. As of an assessment, one month ago, the city has approximately $16 million in bonds that could be refunded, which would save the city 3.5 million in debt service over the next 10 years. The refunding transactions will be credit neutral and will not push the current debt out. The council last granted refunding authorization in 2019, which has since run out. Granting additional authorization total allows the city the flexibility to move quickly to take advantage of refunding transaction opportunities when market conditions are most favorable. I recommend that this matter ought to pass.
Thank you. Thank you. Counsel Fernandez Anderson, the Chair of the Committee on Ways and Means, seeks acceptance of the committee report in passage of docket 0158. Mr. Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Docket number 0158. Counselor Arroyo.
Yes.
Counselor Arroyo, yes. Counselor Baker.
Aye.
Counselor Baker, yes. Counselor Bach.
Yes.
Counselor Bach, yes. Counselor Braden.
Yes.
Counselor Braden, yes. Counselor Edwards.
Yes.
Counselor Edwards, yes. Counselor Fernandez Anderson.
Yes.
Counselor Fernandez Anderson, yes. Counselor Flaherty.
Yes.
Counselor Flaherty, yes. Counselor Flynn.
Yes.
Counselor Flynn, yes. Counselor Lara.
Yes.
Counselor Lara, yes. Counselor Louis Jen.
Yes.
Counselor Louis Jen, yes. Counselor Mejia.
Yes.
Counselor Mejia, yes. Counselor Murphy.
Yes.
Counselor Murphy, yes. Counselor Worrell.
Yes.
Counselor Worrell, yes. Mr. President, docket number 0158 has received a unanimous vote.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Docket 0158 has passed. And Counselor Fernandez Anderson is exactly right. That was not her maiden speech, but we are looking forward to it in a couple of weeks. So just want to say thank you for that reminder, Counselor Fernandez Anderson.
Thank you.
We're on to motions, orders, and resolutions. Mr. Clerk, please read docket 0259, please.
Docket number 0259. Counselor Mejia and Arroyo offer the following in ordinance amending City of Boston Code ordinances, Chapter 15, Section 10, and establishing the Boston Fair Chance Act.
The chair recognizes Counselor Mejia. Counselor Mejia, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you to Counselor Arroyo and his staff for co-sponsoring this docket alongside of our office. The City of Boston employs nearly 20,000 people to do all sorts of jobs, from parking attendants to EMS workers to sewer workers and more. There are a few things in our city that aren't made better by the work of our city employees. We saw during the last storm how essential our Boston Public Works employees really are. And for many of them, this isn't just about collecting a paycheck. Their jobs aren't just what they do, it's who they are. Over the past several months, I have been in deep communication and meeting with these workers to learn about their experiences working for the city. In each meeting, we heard the same story. Workers of color, some who have been city employees for nearly 30 years, have been routinely denied opportunities to advance their careers and obtain higher wages. A quick look at the city's employment dashboard reveals this to be true. According to the demographics dashboard, as of January 2022, while white employees made up 48.9% of the total workforce, they disproportionately represented 61.6% of employees making over $80,000 a year. Even in departments with large percentages of employees of color, the top earners are predominantly white, such as the Department of Public Works, where black and brown employees make up nearly half of the total of the workforce, but only 10% of the top 10 earners. We have heard from workers of color who have been tasked with training newer, less experienced, predominantly white employees for positions above them, meaning that they are somehow experienced enough to train management, but not experienced enough to be management. We have also heard from qualified city employees who sought to seek higher levels of employment only to be passed over for a buddy or a relative of a hiring manager. In hearings, we have asked questions to numerous departments as to why they do not have a more diverse workforce. Each time we ask this question, we hear a similar response, that the talent just isn't there. After meeting with countless workers of color, each of whom have demonstrated their expertise, their passion, and their commitment to the city, it is clear that the talent is there, but we're just not utilizing it. This is why we are filing the Boston Fair Chance Act. The Fair Chance Act formally codifies a chief diversity officer position who will work with all city agencies to develop a detailed plan for hiring minority employees, women employees, LGBTQ+ employees, and employees with disabilities, a detailed plan for promotions of said employees, a detailed plan for improving workplace culture preventing harassment, intimidation, and bullying, and a detailed plan for disseminating this information to covered employees. The chief diversity officer will also take the steps to ensure that opportunities for nepotism or workforce discrimination are eliminated. We have the capacity in Boston to create a workforce that is representative of our communities and representative of our commitment to economic empowerment. I look forward to this conversation and to strengthening this ordinance alongside my colleagues. And you know, and I just have to say, in being in deep community with a lot of our city employees, many of which were even afraid to speak up, it just goes to show the volume of importance that this particular conversation has in this moment in time to ensure that we're moving the needle when it comes to ensuring that all people have the opportunity to rise up. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Mejia. The chair recognizes Counsel Arroyo. Counsel Arroyo, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Counsel Mejia, who summarized this really well. What I'll just add to this is I think it's incredibly important that as a city, we ensure that residents are qualified to get employed or promoted, get a fair chance at doing so. And my hope is that these changes help make a fair and more just process when it comes to, and frankly, a more transparent process when it comes to how we decide and make hires and promotions in the City of Boston. And so I look forward to working on this with council. And I'm grateful to Counsel Mejia for her work in this. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Arroyo. Is anyone else looking to speak on this matter? If you are, can you raise your hand? I don't see anyone wishing to speak on this matter. If you would like to add your name, would you please raise your hand this time? Mr. Clerk, could you add Counselor Fernandez Anderson, Counselor Lara, Counselor Murphy, Counselor Braden, Counselor Legine, Counselor Worrell, Counselor Flaherty, Counselor Bach? Please add the chair. I don't see anyone else's name. Anyone else's hand. Docket 0259 will be referred to the Committee on Government Operations. Mr. Clerk, please read docket 0260, please.
Docket number 0260. Counselor Flynn offered the following: Resolution in support of H3115, an act ensuring equitable representation in the Commonwealth.
Counsel Arroyo, would you please step in at this time?
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Clerk. The chair recognizes the lead sponsor, Counsel Flynn. You have the floor.
Thank you, Counsel Arroyo. This is a refile from last year in support of a state bill that would allow for greater representation in accuracy in data that the state collects. This was a resolution that was sponsored by myself and then Counsel Wu. It was passed unanimously in the council last year. We know that different communities have different needs and that there are many different ethnic subgroups within a large racial group. Right now, state agencies are not required to collect this data on race and ethnicity. And demographic data often do not reflect the diversity within a racial group. For example, our AAPI residents oftentimes don't have the option to fill out which ethnicity they are, whether they are Vietnamese, Chinese, Indian, or other ethnic subgroup. And that data gets lumped together under one racial group, despite the diversity within the AAPI community. H3115, it's sponsored by Representative Taki Chan of Quincy. It would require state agencies to collect and publicize data for major ethnic groups within our Asian, Pacific Island, Black, African American, Latino, White groups. However, the bill also clarifies that individuals are not required to fill out this information and mandate that people cannot be denied services for not choosing to participate. Any personal information is kept confidential and protected by State and Federal Privacy Act. Data that discusses ethnic subgroups would allow us to better understand the different needs between ethnic groups. And without that data, the needs of our most undeserved groups are often invisible. With the rise of hate crimes against AAPI community due to the pandemic, it is critical that we change policies and continue to render our minority communities. We want to make sure that they're engaged, they're active, and they're heard. This bill would be a meaningful step in creating better visibility, insight, understanding into the ill-lived experiences. Just as an example, in Chinatown, the Chinese community has the highest rate of asthma of any ethnic group in New England, really. But there's a difference between the Chinese community and other Asian communities, maybe in the South End or in Charleston or the Vietnamese community in Boston. So it's important for us to dig deeper and learn about the data. I hope that we can pass this resolution today so that we can send our support for this bill up to the State House. They're doing an excellent job trying to pass this and ensure that our communities are represented equally. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Flynn. Would anyone else like to speak on the matter? Seeing no hands, would anyone like to add their name? Mr. Clerk, please add Counselor Murphy. Please add Counselor Braden. Please add Counselor Edwards. Please add Counselor Baker. Please add Counselor Mejia. Please add Counselor Bach. Please add Counselor Flaherty. Please add Counselor Louis Jen. Please add Counselor Worrell. And please add Counselor Lara and Counselor Fernandez Anderson. And please add my name as well. Counselor Flynn, you're asking for a suspension and pass, right?
Yes, that's correct, Counsel.
Thank you. Mr. Clerk, seeing no objection, Mr. Clerk, can we please do a roll call vote on the suspension and passage of docket 0260?
Docket number 0260. Counselor Arroyo.
Yes.
Counselor Arroyo, yes. Counselor Baker.
Aye.
Counselor Baker, yes. Counselor Bach.
Aye.
Counselor Bach, yes. Counsel Braden.
Yes.
Counsel Braden, yes. Counsel Edwards.
Yes.
Counsel Edwards, yes. Counsel Fernandez Anderson.
Yes.
Counsel Fernandez Anderson, yes. Counsel Flaherty.
Yes.
Counsel Flaherty, yes. Counsel Flynn.
Yes.
Counsel Flynn, yes. Counsel Lara.
Yes.
Counsel Lara, yes. Counsel Louis Jen.
Yes.
Counsel Louis Jen, yes. Counsel Mejia.
Yes.
Counsel Mejia, yes. Counsel Murphy.
Yes.
Yes.
Counsel Murphy, yes. Counsel Worell.
Yes.
Counsel Worell, yes. Document number 0260 has received the unanimous vote and is a document.
Thank you, Clerk. Thank you, President Flynn.
Thank you, Counsel Royal. Mr. Clerk, can you please read Document 0261?
Document number 0261, Counselor Flaherty offered the following: Order for a hearing to discuss declining enrollment at Boston Public Schools.
Counsel Flaherty, could I stop just for a second? I see Counsel Edwards has her hand raised. Counsel Edwards, did you have a question?
I apologize for coming out of order. I was in the elevator when there was a sign-on for the previous document with sponsors by Counselors Mahia and Arroyo, and I would just like my name added to that. That's all.
Thank you, Counsel Edwards. Mr. Clerk, could you please add Counsel Edwards? Counsel Flaherty, you have the floor.
Mr. President, if there's no objection, I'd like to add Counsel Murphy as an original co-sponsor to Document 0261.
Seeing no objection, please add Counsel Murphy, Mr. Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. President. This hearing order is a refile from September 2020. At the original filing, I talked about how our Boston Public Schools have been through an enormous amount of upheaval, change, and uncertainty as a result of COVID-19. Here we are a little over a year later, and BPS has gone through even more changes and unfortunately, more instability as a result. Decline in student enrollment at BPS accelerated during the pandemic and unfortunately hasn't stopped, and it's declined another 4% this school year. Enrollment is down across all races and ethnicities, with Black and Brown student enrollments experiencing the most severe decline. In 2016, Bill BPS projected the K-2 to K-12 enrollment would increase by 1.8% by 2021, 2022 school year, and instead, the enrollment has actually decreased by 14% since 2016. Again, decreased by 14% since 2016. While BPS has taken steps to support the schools while with declining enrollment, they've provided the 18.5 million on top of the existing soft landing funding, as well as the Foundation for Quality in fiscal year 2022 budget, the decline in enrollment is still troubling for a variety of reasons, chief of which is that the weighted student formula helps determine funding levels for our schools, and the declining enrollment may have, will have, a detrimental effect on our funding levels for schools this year. So I want to ensure that we, as a city, are being proactive about identifying key factors that are driving enrollment decline, implementing changes that will help address these factors and discussing how the declines in enrollment will impact capital plans made through Bill BPS. Many people, including all of my colleagues here, have been ringing the alarm about COVID-19, exacerbating the achievement gap in our schools, and I'm concerned that if this trend continues, we will end up with an even deeper education divide with families that can afford private school tuition and will pull their kids out of the district system on one side and families that cannot, and will continue to be assigned to underperforming or chronically underperforming schools. So all of our students deserve access to high-quality public education in Boston, and for that reason, I'm looking forward to an expedited hearing to discuss this issue. And through the Chair, obviously, recognize the co-sponsor and recognize that we've got a frontline teacher that is now a colleague of ours that has tremendous experience in this space and has seen things firsthand that I'm sure she can opine about, but I look forward to an expedited hearing and appreciate everyone's time and attention and encourage folks to sign on and get involved. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Counsel Flaherty. The Chair recognizes Counsel Murphy. Counsel Murphy, you have the floor.
Thank you, and thank you, Counsel Flaherty. And a lot of what you already said, but we know BPS enrollment has been on a decline, and we have 4,311 less students the last time they checked. So this rapid decline is going to have a drastic effect on our budget, and we know this is the time in January when principals are submitting their school budgets for staffing. And if we're looking at almost, you know, 4,500 students, that's lots of teachers where they're going to have to be closing classrooms, where we already started the year with 700 positions vacant in BPS, so we already have a staffing crisis throughout COVID right now. And the weighted student funding, the dollars follow the students. So if some schools' enrollment could be down a lot more than others, that we're going to have to be looking at closing schools or, you know, laying off teachers. So looking forward to this work, and thank you, Counsel Flaherty, for having me join this on this with you.
Thank you, Counsel Murphy. Would any other Counsel like to speak on this matter? If you would, could you please raise your hand? The Chair recognizes Counsel Braden. Counsel Braden, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you to Counsel Flaherty and Counsel Murphy for sponsoring this. This is a really, really challenging and complex issue. Falling enrollment has many, many factors: inward migration, outward migration, just the challenges of COVID have exacerbated everything that came before. I am a very strong believer that all Boston Public Schools are the best and could be the best in the country. I think sometimes we do a very poor job of holding up their incredible achievements and excellence when we see it, and while at the same time addressing some of the other more challenging issues, it's not helpful that we get a continuous stream of bad press and we don't get some balance in recognizing all the wonderful things that our teachers and our families and our students are doing every day. So I really value this opportunity to do a deep dive into looking at this issue and see if we can reverse the trend. So thank you so much, and please sign me on.
Thank you. Thank you, Counsel Braden. Please, yeah, Counsel Braden's name. Would anyone else like to speak on this matter? I will speak very briefly. I worked on, I believe with Counsel Flaherty as well, on getting our HVAC systems in our schools fixed, updated, making sure our students can learn in a healthy environment where the heat is on in the summertime, in the spring and fall, the AC is working as well. So Counsel Flaherty, I guess to you, will we also be discussing the infrastructure of some of these schools that do need some support in terms of infrastructure updates and investments?
Yes, Mr. President, we will bring the Build BPS folks in as well, because that's going to be a factor here. If these trends continue with declining enrollment, then clearly decisions will be made as to whether or not schools need to be closed and/or what they call mothballed, and whether or not those much-needed and long-overdue repairs, they also potentially could be put on hold as well. So that will be, Mr. President, part and parcel of this discussion.
Yeah. Thank you, Counsel Flaherty. That's important. Thank you very much. Would anyone like to add their name to this? I see Counsel Baker. Please add Counsel Baker. Please add Counsel Royal. Please add Counsel Bock. Counsel Mahia. Counsel Worell. Counsel Lejeune. Counsel Edwards. Counsel Lara. Document 0... We mentioned Counsel Edwards. Document 0261 will be referred to the Committee on Education. Mr. Clerk, will you please read Document 0262, please?
Document number 0262, Counsel Flaherty offered the following: Order for a hearing to discuss offering property tax abatements to property owners in the New Market area.
The Chair recognizes Counsel Flaherty. Counsel Flaherty, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. As everybody on this body knows, particularly the district councils that have been covering this, the residents and business owners in the New Market and Mass and Cass area have experienced deteriorating and at times horrific conditions over the last several years that includes decline in public safety, decline in public health, overall cleanliness, and general decrease in their quality of life that are not necessarily reflected in property valuations in this area. As an at-large counsel, I've done numerous walkthroughs with residents and business owners and advocates, along with neighborhood groups, city department leaders, and despite those efforts to increase city services and to better coordinate efforts across departments to meet the increased need in the area, and that includes expedited needle cleanup, sidewalk cleaning, mental health outreach, and street workers, et cetera, we've still fallen short on our standards, so much so that the New Market businesses have created the New Market bid and are going around collecting fees from their members to finance supplemental services above and beyond what the city has been providing. Property taxes, as folks know, make up nearly 75% of our revenues. So again, you know, suggesting an abatement for property taxes is not something that I do sort of lightly as a fiscal steward of the city. That said, I think this is a very unique and special case, and I feel that in recognition of our shortcomings, to provide an adequate level of city services to the homeowners and to the business owners is in the area that we should explore the idea of offering a property tax abatement. Generally speaking, the driving idea behind this hearing order is the notion that taxpayers do deserve a high level of basic city services, and to some degree, I think we've dropped the ball here. And so looking forward to an expedited hearing, bringing in the stakeholders. Let's talk about what area it would encompass and whether or not it makes sense for the city to offer them something, even while the bid is ramping up. Maybe that's something that we can offer them in addition to, we're going to be going at those businesses to increase their contribution and/or to make payments to the bid. Maybe we can offer them something in the short term that takes a little bit of the bite out of getting the bid going. So, and again, I know that there are folks here, our colleague Counsel Baker's done a lot of great work, Counsel Flynn on the bid, working with those folks. So this would sort of be, I guess, a compliment to that, that if we can provide an abatement to the residents, to homeowners, and to the business owners over there, you know, it may take a little bit out of their feeling that we, the city, have abandoned them over the last few years as conditions continue to deteriorate in the area. And look forward again, and feel free to hear some comments, and welcome folks to sign on.
Thank you, Counsel Flaherty. Would any other Counsel like to speak on this issue? If you do, can you please raise your hand? I see Counsel Arroyo. The Chair recognizes Counsel Arroyo. You have the floor.
Thank you, President Flynn. I just have a question through the Chair to the Maker. Would this apply to the residential folks in the area as well for sort of the same, similar reasoning, or is this just for the business folks and why the distinction or difference?
Thank you for the question. As referenced in my comments, the focus will be on the homeowners, the residents that are there. That's sort of priority number one, the residents, and then obviously the businesses, both of them combined equally. And I've done the walkthroughs, I'm sure you have, as well as our other colleagues, up and down all those neighborhood streets, and listening to the talk about having to clean out the needles and having their cars broken into and having people urinating and defecating and literally having sex out in front of their house in their window, all of it, trash, graffiti, and they continue to call us, they continue to reach out to the city, to Public Works, to everyone that would listen. And again, they felt that it fell on deaf ears just given the complexity of the situation and all the issues that were involved with it and trying to deal with it in both balancing sort of the public safety and the public health needs, and sometimes they were on the same page, sometimes they weren't. So the homeowners, the residents, and some of them, some of the city's highest taxpayers are in some of these properties. So yes, the question is, it will be for both.
Thank you for that clarification. Please add my name, President Flynn.
Yeah, please add Counsel Arroyo's name. Would anyone else like to speak on this matter before we go to others? Counsel Braden? Your hand is raised.
Beg your pardon. That's my omission. I forgot to lower my hands. Thank you.
Okay, okay. Counsel Edwards, you have your hand raised? Okay, if you would like to add your name, please raise your hand. Please add Counsel Murphy, Counsel Baker, Counsel Worell, Counsel Mahia, Counsel Edwards, Counsel Fernandez-Anderson, Counsel Bock, Counsel Braden. Please add the Chair. Counsel Lejeune. Document 0262 will be referred to the Committee on Ways and Means. Mr. Clerk, please read Document 0263, please.
Document number 0263, Counsel Baker and Murphy offered the following: Order for a hearing to address the Public Health Declaration of 2020.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. The Chair recognizes Counsel Baker. Counsel Baker, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President, for allowing me the floor. I filed this hearing because we've been in a state of emergency, and this isn't a secret to anybody. We've been in a state of emergency for over two years, and along with that state of emergency came, just recently came with the suspension of collective bargaining rights, came with the suspension of business rights and individual rights, in my opinion. There's been no discussion with the Boston Public Health Board. If we look at the last couple of months, they haven't even met. The administration says that this is based on, you know, discussions with public health officials. Maybe it is. We don't know. Previous administration, going back to the Walther administration, when this first started happening, we had, I think, six months' worth of daily meetings. So we knew what the metrics were. We knew what 5% positivity rate meant. We knew what hospital bed surges were. We knew and were totally informed on what we're doing and why we're doing what we're doing. The way that this was rolled out in a press conference, where we got literally a half-an-hour heads-up on it, looked more like a campaign rally than it did a public health emergency declaration. Cities and towns all around Boston are dropping their mandates, and one thing that's interesting that's happening, they're dropping those mandates based on votes from either selectmen or councils or their boards of health. Just this morning, Desi lifted, will lift at the end of this month, the mask mandate for schools. And again, this is just a plea to give people an opportunity to ask what is going on here. It looks political to me. It doesn't look like we're really paying attention to business needs, to what people are saying about their situations. And I want to make one more point is that when this hearing happens, I plan to have this in person, so people come in and have their voices heard. When the declaration was first announced in March 2020, there's been 40 filings for COVID response from the city. This latest declaration was two months ago. We haven't heard anything from the city council, nothing at all. We haven't been in, we haven't been kept in the loop. I mean, the new city councils, they're totally in the dark, and I don't mean that in a bad way. I mean that in a transparency and accountability way. We need to hold people accountable for their decisions that are being made. So we've made decisions based on, Counsel Flaherty just talked about, what's going on down at Mass and Cass, and we've made decisions on how we're housing homeless now through this declaration. We've made decisions where we've taken, where we totally ignore agreements that we have with our unions. We've made decisions to show IDs at restaurants. I mean, God forbid if we ever showed an ID when we were voting. What would people do? What would most of this council do if we asked for that? But yet, going into a restaurant, we need to show our IDs. I think that we need to really get serious about this and have the discussions, and if we don't want, if this administration does not want this hearing next week, does not want to discuss this, then drop the mandates. That would be my suggestion. If we're dropping the mandates by Monday or Tuesday, then we don't have to have this discussion. If we're going to abide by collective bargaining agreements, if we're going to drop the vax passport to get in to go eat, and mind you, none of the other surrounding communities have this, so we're putting our Boston businesses at a disadvantage, talking constantly about how we're going to get more money into the pockets of the businesses. Drop this mandate, and they will have more money in their pockets. Thank you, Mr. Chair, for allowing me to speak. Again, my plan is to have this hearing in person, and with that, I'd like to turn it over to my co-sponsor. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Counsel Baker. The Chair recognizes Counsel Murphy. Counsel Murphy, you have the floor.
Thank you, President Flynn, and thank you, Counsel Baker. So as we all know, Governor Baker declared a state of emergency back on March 10, 2020, took us out of the state of urgency on June 15, 2021, and we, as a city, did stay in that emergency based on our rates and our concerns that the administration had in June. We had a big surge after the holiday. We knew Omicron was coming, but because now we have a much higher percentage of our residents vaccinated, we didn't have as many people getting sick. On January 10, we did see the biggest spike, where we had 3,729 new cases. On February 8 of just the other day, we had 336 new cases. So if you look at the matrix and the data, we are seeing a huge drop in the cases, and also looking at the wastewater numbers are going down. So we're definitely not just maybe trending towards a safer place, but we're definitely going into a good place if we're not there already, as we've seen in the New, Salem, Worcester, other surrounding towns and cities are meeting with their border health and their selectmen and their counselors in their voting and looking at the data together. My question, and hope to get answered out of this, is when will we move out of a state of emergency and into a state of recovery? Also, I'm wondering, does our Board of Health meet regularly and vote on these issues? I did see that there are members and that they have had some meetings, but I'm not sure if they're voting and sharing that out with us. So also, are all of the seats, because I know that the Boston Public Health Commission Board Office was created by the Health Act of 1995, and of the six members, two shall be Neighborhood Health Center Directors, and the other one is filled by the mayor. So wondering if all of our appointed seats are filled right now, especially in the middle of a public health seats are filled right now, especially in the middle of a public health crisis in a state of emergency where all of these big decisions are being made. Also, as members of the council, I speak for myself, want to make sure that we're part of those conversations and able to weigh in and have this real time data. If anyone clicks on the Health Commission website, the dashboard hasn't been updated since September 30, 2021. Also, the, yeah, that was the last week ending. And if you click on COVID cases and you scroll through, it will give you the 502 bad gateway error. So it's not opening to links. So we can't really get updated information when it comes to metrics and dashboard data. So would really like to have, you know, transparency and reporting that is in real time. Because if you look at the numbers, if we went from 3,729 new cases four weeks ago to 336 today, things are changing rapidly. It could be even lower today, right? So things are changing so quickly that we really need access to, not just us as a council, and although I think it's important we have it, but the public should have access to that real time data. So I'm hoping that this hearing will address some of the issues that I have and look forward to working with the Public Health Commission, the administration, and my colleagues on this. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilor Murphy. I know, would any other councils, councils like to speak on this? Please raise your hand. I do know Councilor Edwards has her hand up. The Chair recognizes Council Edward. You have the floor.
Thank you very much. I want to thank Council Baker and Council Murphy for your leadership on this. I think this is consistent with a lot of conversations we've had as the council. And this is when the council is doing its job the best. It's asking the right questions. It's inviting people to come to the table. And I really see this for as what it is. This is not a confrontational invitation. This is one for us to come together to see how we're going to get through this moment. And that's why it's important that we have all the stakeholders here. What we want is consistent real data and consistent real measurements. And I do want to actually commend the administration for giving some recent amendments, or excuse me, data marks and goals in order for us to remove the vaccine mandate. I think that we'd like to continue to have that conversation and make very clear to people that this is something I personally am interested in, in having more questions answered and more transparency about this particular moment. We do this all the time when it comes to race, when it comes to gender, when it comes to holding our city accountable for the discriminatory acts taken for years. We do this now in our housing, our housing policy with AFFH. We hold the mirror up, we ask the difficult questions, and we demand that the city rise to the occasion. This is exactly part of that. But I want to make sure part of this conversation is, when we're holding this up, this isn't what went wrong. This is also in what's going right. The fact of the matter is, majority, vast majority into the 90s, city workers are getting vaccinated. I think that has a lot to do with the vaccine mandate. I think a great deal, the fact that our rates are going down, I don't want that disconnect to be ignored. Could it be that because we are doing these things, that the rates of COVID is going down? I don't want it to be seen as two different worlds or two different disconnects. There could be a causal effect that actually having these mandates is helpful and healthy for the city of Boston. I want that question answered, and I want to see how we can continue to go forward. But I don't think we should be setting ourselves up to figure out how we are done with this. I think we're going to be living with this for the rest of our lives. I think we're going to be living with a pandemic. And the question is, what infrastructure, what culture, what school system are we going to create from this and the lessons that we need to learn to make sure that we don't turn on each other every single time the government has to act when there's a potential pandemic or emergency? I'm really disheartened by how cruel people have been to each other because they disagree about a mask. I am disheartened by how this moment has torn us apart. And I don't want this hearing to be part of that tearing us apart. Also, while I appreciate that the hearing may be in person, I do, I'm pushing and I hope that there's a hybrid option, that some people can participate, at least if we're having it in a chamber, they could participate from home on their screens. One, because I think that's part of the infrastructure and the new culture that we're going to have at the city of Boston, where we're going to have hearings that are hybrid models. We have legislation pushing for that, where we will have essentially people participating in hearings. So I think that's part of just continuing that. It's the safer option for some people who really are concerned about contracting this disease. And you know what? Because of testing, there are some people who would have, may have COVID that day and don't want to expose other people, even though they may be asymptomatic. So I would encourage the maker and the hearing holder to have a hybrid model at the very least. I would encourage the maker and the hearing holder, if this hearing is going to be here in the chambers, to make sure that the people who are attending know that they have to wear masks. And that if they're, and then to set the rules and the culture upfront at the beginning of the hearing, that this is going to be a respectful conversation. I'm not going to lie, I'm concerned that people are seeing this as a rally moment to scream about their frustrations. And as you have started this conversation, Councilors Baker and Murphy, I look to you and your leadership to make sure this conversation is respectful, kind, and actually brings us together.
Thank you. Thank you, Council Edwards. At this time, the Chair recognizes Council Flaherty. Council Flaherty, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. Would like to expand on the previous speaker. We are the legislative branch of city government, and we should not be abdicating our responsibility in this space. Anything pertaining to public health, public safety, public schools, public transportation, small local businesses, that's our purview. That's what we do. We were elected by the people of Boston. We don't have to ask to be put into the game. We're in the game. And in these decisions, however big or however small, deserve to come before this body. And particularly for the new members, this is where the rubber meets the road. And new members, what better training than to be, to be put right into the, into the mix here and to be part of this process? So I would concur with the three previous speakers clearly that we have a role to play here as the legislative branch of city government. The people of Boston, particularly me, I'm elected citywide. We have district councils as well. Folks in your district, people across the city have elected you, they've entrusted you to be at the table, to be making the decisions for them. We're not at the table making any of these decisions. The decisions are being made and not within consultation of the Boston City Council. That's not how the charter works. So any self-respecting member of this body who wants to be in the game and who wants to get involved and have some say over these decisions, I would suggest not only sign on, but participate at the hearing. Please add my name, Mr. President.
Yes, please add Council Flaherty's name. Would anyone else like to speak on this matter? Please raise your hand. I will speak very briefly on this matter. In January 2020, yeah, January 2020, we actually had the first public meeting in the country at the Josiah Quincy School that we organized. I helped organize it with Chief Marty Martinez. And this is really before anyone knew anything about COVID-19. And we had an excellent meeting at the school, many from the Chinese community, many from the, from the AAPI community, medical professionals, Dr. Lowe, Nancy Lowe was there. So this, this council has a history of being on the forefront of issues. But let me, let me just say, the most meaningful comment that night of the meeting is, we were talking about the impact COVID will have, even though it really hadn't, hadn't arrived yet into Boston. But there was a young student, I believe she was either at Boston Latin or Boston Latin Academy, and she was taking the train on the, I believe she was on the orange line. And she told us during the meeting, when she got on the train, she was a young Asian student, and when she got on the train, the train emptied up, emptied out when she walked on, because they associated her with COVID-19. So it's having, so this COVID-19, this pandemic has had a devastating impact on everybody, but also especially the AAPI community. We've seen hate crimes, we've seen anti-Asian discrimination and violence. But what this city in this country, I hope, will do is continue to work together, listen to each other, be respectful, and understand each other. And, you know, it's about listening and working together and treating each other with respect and dignity. So I just want to highlight those brief comments. If anyone else would like to speak on the matter, or raise your hand if you would like to add your name, please. Council, Council Edwards is already called. And the Chair. Document 0263 will be referred to the Committee on Public Health, Homelessness, and Recovery. Mr. Clerk, please read document 0264, please.
Document number 0264, Councilors Mejia and Flynn offer the following order that the appropriate committee of the Boston City Council hold a working session to review applications for the Commission on Black Men and Boys.
Councilor Arroyo, will you please take over at this time?
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. The Chair recognizes the lead sponsor, Council Mejia.
Thank you to the Chair, and thank you to Council President Flynn for working with our office so quickly to get this order sent it to the council today. In September of 2021, the city council passed an ordinance establishing a commission on black men and boys. Since then, we have been working with the administration and with advocates to ensure that the commission is set up for success. In the spirit of transparency, and as the Chair of the Committee on Government Accountability and Transparency and Accessibility, we have an opportunity to play a role in who is going to serve whose mission. The mayor's office reached out to us and asked if the council could submit 14 names, of which seven will be chosen to serve on the commission. We then partnered with Councilor President Flynn and Councilor Morell to design an application process in the hopes of getting a wide variety of people interested in applying in the commission. Starting today, people interested in applying can go to boston.gov/join-the-commission-on-black-men-and-boys and submit an application to be on the council's 14 nominees. Our office will send out a link to the application to each of your offices following the meeting. Applications will be open from today, February 9 through February 23. Applicants will be asked to share their professional and personal interests in regards to uplifting black men and voices. Once we receive our applications, we will hold a working session so that we can come to a consensus on our nominations. I strongly encourage my council colleagues to share the application to as many interested individuals and groups as possible. We have an obligation to ensure that our Commission on Black Men and Boys represents a diverse lived experience and worldviews so that it is truly a commission for all black men and boys. I want to again thank President Flynn and his office for their quick turnaround and authorizing this process. And I also want to thank Council Morell and his team for playing a vital role in ensuring that the application process meets this moment. And of course, I want to show my appreciation and deep gratitude for Carrie Jordan for working to get our application up and running. This has been a team process from the beginning to the end, and we are setting the tone for how we hope the commission will operate. I look forward to this process and working alongside each of you. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Mejia. The Chair recognizes the second original co-sponsor, Councilor Flynn. You have the floor.
Thank you, Council Arroyo. I want to say thank you to Council Arroyo, but also Councilor Mejia for your work on this important, on this important subject. I also want to say thank you to Council, Council Brian Morell for his important work as well, his leadership, Council Mejia's leadership. As Council Mejia mentioned, the city council will be able to nominate candidates to be on the Commission on Black Men and Boys. So with this order, we are setting up a process to review applications to be on, to be on the commission, to get feedback from our colleagues. I also want to say thank you to Mayor Wu and her administration. This will be similar to the process that Council Campbell had for nominations to the civilian review board. I look forward to working with everyone on the nomination process. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Flynn. Would anyone else like to speak on this matter? Seeing no one, would anyone like to add their names to the document? Please add Council Flaherty. Please add Council Bach. Please add Council Morell. Please add Council Murphy. Please add Council Braden. Please add Council Baker. Please add my name. Please add Council Fernandez-Anderson. Please add Council Lara. And please add Council Louis Jen. Did I miss anyone else? No? Okay. And with that, document number 0264 will be assigned to the Committee on Civil Rights and Immigrant Advancement. Back to you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Council Arroyo. Mr. Clerk, will you please read document 0265?
Document number 0265, Councilor Baker offered the following, in order authorizing the city of Boston to accept and expend a grant funded through the coronavirus state and local fiscal recovery fund, CLFRF, in the Treasury of the United States established by Section 91, 9901 of the American Rescue Plan Act of 2021, ARPA, awarded by the United States Department of the Treasury.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. The Chair recognizes Council Baker. Council Baker, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just to be clear, this is an ask for $10 million. I filed this in a long order looking for a way to support the Boys and Girls Club of Dorchester, who in collaboration with the Martin Richards Foundation are proposing a once in a lifetime, once in a generation opportunity to transform Apostle Land on Columbia Point into a vibrant youth development facility, a field house, designed to holistically meet the ever-evolving needs of Boston's 50,000 children and teens living in a three-mile radius, including the 1,000 Boston public school students who attend the abutting Devon McCormick Schools, using the ARP monies as received. The ARP money thus far has come down from the mayor, the pathway has come down from the mayor asking us for approvals. I would like to change that and have an ask from a district city council and have it go up. Again, it doesn't necessarily need to be asked, Opera money, but this is an official ask for $10 million to go towards this field house. So the city would signal to the state, because the state has already made commitments towards this field house. The Boys and Girls Club of Dorchester currently operates three clubhouses servicing, servicing a culturally and ethnically diverse range of children from newborns to 18. I believe, I believe if we can help with some funding, we can create a community that can stay on the peninsula from a young age through college at UMass and potentially right into a job, as well as receive the support they need. This would be a hub school model where children and adults alike have a safe place from before school through dinnertime. This will also be a facility that will be fully accessible and inclusive to all, and a great benefit to the school community on Columbia Point. We have an amazing opportunity here to use the funds to be able to point to a tangible structure that will be built successfully in this time of Opera money. And again, to restate what I've been stating since the beginning when we were talking about all the Opera money, my concern is that if we're not in line with projects to build with the money coming down from the feds, we're going to look back in five years and look at a whole lot of debt coming down on the federal government and have no assets, no assets that we've actually built, infrastructure, meaning field houses, meaning housing, meaning libraries, meaning parks. We need to be building things with money. And yes, thank you, building, building things with this money so we'll be able to point to things that we've been able to build with this money from the feds. Again, this is more of a way so I can have my colleagues in a hearing and view this structure and view what the whole plan is over here on Columbia Point. It's part of a lot of minds that are, that are, that are together on the point, talking about education that will start at K zero and end in at UMass. And also job opportunities that will happen with the new development in the next five to 10 years also. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Council Baker. Would any other councilors like to speak on this matter? If you would, would you please raise your hand? The Chair recognizes Council Murphy. Council Murphy, you have the floor.
Yeah, thank you, Council Baker. And just wanted to quickly say that I do know personally the Boys and Girls Club of Dorchester, who has helped so many families and children, and continue to, and the MRA Foundation, and them coming together and really working on this and working hard to raise most of the funds themselves. and working hard to raise most of the funds themselves. This support from us would just really make the difference. And also agree what Counsel Baker said, that this once-in-a-generation lifetime money coming from the federal government, housing and all of these other issues are very important. But if we can invest and make sure we're investing in lasting infrastructure, that our grandchildren can look back and see, you know, that it's not things that we're not going to even remember what we put into, because this will be generation, thousands of children benefiting from this. And with love, like Baker said, Counsel Baker said that when we have this hearing, having MRA and the Boys and Girls Club come to us as the council and really share with us the work they've been doing and their vision for this amazing clubhouse. And, you know, it's an empty parking lot. Anyone who's been in that area or have, if you lived in Dorchester like myself for the last decades, if you drive down that street, it's been an empty parking lot forever, right behind PC High, which is always updating their football field and their soccer field. And, you know, UMass Boston is on the other side of it. So, and knowing that 100% dedicated to making sure that the students, the staff at the McCormick Dever, which is the public school there, which had recently got, you know, in receivership, has come out of receivership, struggling to, you know, be successful. It would be a really great support for the students and staff there. And they have openly and made sure that they're committed to be, having the school use that as a gym and that clubhouse all day during the school day is something that really mattered to me. And when I knew they were committed to that, that really makes a difference. So thank you, um, Counsel Baker for bringing this up. And I hope also that other district councillors who know their neighborhoods best, um, come forward to this council with their ideas of what they know that they need in their neighborhoods that we can use this money for. That's going to help our, and I think it ties closely, um, into the order I filed last week about mental health and making sure that we have spaces, safe spaces that are programmed in this wonderful way for our students, for our children, for our, you know, our young adults. So, thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Murphy. I know Counselor Flaherty has his hand up, but let me go to the original co-sponsor next, Counsel Baker.
Sorry, Mr. President. I meant to, I meant to ask to suspend Rule 12 and add Counsel, Counsel Murphy on that. I believe it's Rule 12 as an original co-sponsor.
Mr. Clerk, can we please add, uh, Counsel Murphy as an original co-sponsor?
Yes.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Clerk. Uh, the chair recognizes Counsel Flaherty.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, great organization, uh, great programming and great results. Please add my name.
Thank you, Counsel Flaherty. Please add Counsel Flaherty's name. Counselor Bach has her hand up. Counselor Bach, you have the floor.
Thank you so much, Mr. President. Um, I just wanted to say, and this really follows up on a comment that Counsel Murphy just made, that, you know, just to all councillors, that I'm definitely, as the Chair of the COVID Recovery Committee, happy to hold hearings in order to create a public forum for councillors to present ideas they have about ARPA funds. And so I would just say, um, and although Counsel Baker framed this one in the form of an appropriation order, it would also be fine if somebody writes something more informal. It's sort of a hearing order normally, just as long as it's clear that you're expressing an interest in the ARPA dollar conversation. Because I know that we talked about, um, you know, we have a hearing that we're currently scheduling right now for talking about the ARPA dollars more holistically. And I think that holistic conversation is really important. But I just want to stress as the Chair that, um, that I'm very happy to create a forum for folks to raise ideas they have. Because as has been discussed, obviously, we're the legislative body of the city. And, um, and I do see that as the role of the committee chair to create that space. Wanted to underscore that point for everyone. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counsel Bach, for those comments. Would anyone else like to speak on this matter? Would anyone else like to add their name? Uh, please raise your hand if you'd like to have your name. Um, please add Counselor Braden. Please add the Chair. Document 0263 will be referred to the Committee on Boston's COVID-19 Recovery. Uh, personnel, we're off, onto personnel orders, um, of which we have none. Late files. I am informed by the clerk that there is zero late file matters. Green sheets. If any council would like to remove the matter from the green sheets, you may do so at this time. We're, we're moving on to the consent agenda. I had been informed by the clerk that there is, that there are zero additions to the consented, consent agenda. The Chair moves for adoption of the consent agenda as presented. Mr. Clerk, can you please do a roll call?
Counselor Royal.
Yes.
Counselor Royal, yes. Counselor Baker?
Yes.
Counselor Baker, yes. Counselor Bach?
Yes.
Counselor Bach, yes. Counselor Braden?
Yes.
Counselor Braden, yes. Counselor Edwards? Counselor Fernandez Anderson? Counselor Flaherty?
Yes.
Counselor Flaherty, yes. Counselor Flynn?
Yes.
Counselor Flynn, yes. Counsel Lara?
Yes.
Counsel Lara, yes. Counsel Louis Jen?
Yes.
Counsel Louis Jen, yes. Counselar Mejia?
Yes.
Counselar Mejia, yes. Counselor Murphy?
Yes.
Counselor Murphy, yes. Counsel Rorel?
Yes.
Counsel Rorel, yes. Counsel Edwards? Counselor Fernandez Anderson?
Yes.
Counsel Fernandez Anderson, yes. Mr. President, the consent agenda has been approved.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Um, the consent agenda has been adopted. Announcements, um, do any city councillors have any announcements at this time? If you do, please raise your hand. Memorials. Today, we will adjourn our meeting in memory of the following individuals: For Counselor Bach, John Madigan. For Counselor Braden, Robert Kylie. For Counselor Mejia, Dolores Richardson, Lauren Sampson. For Counselor Rorel and the entire council, State Representative Ray Jordan, Alberto Miranda Perez, the father of Representative Liz Miranda. A moment of silence, please. The Chair moves that when the council adjourns today, it does so in memory of the mentioned individuals. And it is now scheduled to meet again in the council chamber in person on Wednesday, February 16th at 12:00 noon. All in favor of adjournment, please say aye.
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 The councillor is adjourned. Uh, thank you, Mr. Clerk. Thank you, council colleagues. Thank you, city council central staff.
Thank you, President Flynn.
Thanks, everyone.
Thank you.